Tim.
Apologies, folks, I have some technical difficulties getting my computer to turn on. I know Chairman Sullivan is on his way in, he also is having computer problems, so just give him a second.
Four of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Department to order. And is there a quorum here? I don't, I can't see everybody.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Okay, there are a quorum present. Frank, are you an alternate tonight who is participating?
Well, I read the minutes carefully. Yeah, I think I can, I can handle it.
Okay, then. We have a legal notice. There was one, 32 North Road LLC, a special use permit for auto body work in respect to the restoration at 32 North Road. Map 113, block 17, lot 003A, in an M1 zone. There'll be a public hearing at our next meeting, August 11th, 2020. And this was published in Journal Inquirer on July 30th, 2020, and August, and will be on August 6th, 2020. Added agenda items, I do not have any.
Hey, Dick?
Yeah.
Dick, it's Len.
Yeah. Good.
Hey, so I have a question I would like to pose to the, to the commission. And I don't know if you would like me to do it under an added agenda item or under a public participation coming up next. Let me, let me tell you what the question is. Well, I was approached, I got a phone call by a person wanting to know if they could place a mobile home on a piece of land and live in it. I've been trying to find some time to research the regulations. I'm unclear, it almost seems like they could if they met the minimum square footage and lot area, but I'm not completely sure.
I would have to look at those regulations myself, Len. Because I don't have the answer off the top of my head.
Have you all anything regarding the mobile homes recently?
No.
The only thing that came up before, Dick, was we were talking about those little tiny houses at one time that are portable, so typically they're kind of mobile homes, but that's about all that ever came up.
I think in line with that, we talked about using them as something like an in-law apartment or for somebody whose kids couldn't move out of the house, not the primary structure on the property.
Well, this, the way it was posed to me, they wanted to buy a piece of property that, I don't know, it sounded like a larger piece of property, not necessarily a building lot. And I said, you mean like a mobile home, like a trailer kind of mobile home? You're gonna take the wheels off, well, they all come with wheels, it's really a manufactured home. They said, well, is it a manufactured home or is it a mobile home? It'd be either kind of two different things. And I didn't really get a straight answer, but I think they were going towards mobile home. I didn't know if there was anything in the, in the regulations. You know, a lot of the, you know, like a standard mobile home, like a flat roof, I think. And, you know, it's got wheels on it, and I don't know what the square footage is, but I guess I don't know if there's some fair housing thing where you can't deny them if they meet the square footage, the minimum square footage requirement for your zone. But it's not gonna look, it's generally, in my opinion, not gonna look like a house unless they do something like they did at Laurel Court, where they put heatproofs on, and those are manufactured homes. So I don't know if you, I guess you haven't had this come up, huh?
Yeah. Lenny, I think, I think maybe Jay might have, he knows the regs pretty good, I don't know if he has any input.
Surely you mean Jay Ursery?
Yes, I do, yes, I do, Jay Ursery, I'm sorry.
Hi, Jay Ursery. My recollection is, in reading through the regulations, that mobile homes, as Lenny is describing with wheels and so forth, are only allowed as a temporary structure or residence where somebody may have had a home that was destroyed by fire or something of that nature. The only other mobile homes, I think, that are allowed in these twos are parks that currently exist. I don't think new mobile homes are allowed.
Well, that's, that faded out there, Jim, but that's what I read in the regulations. That's really all I saw about mobile homes was that they could be used as a temporary residence while you were restoring a house. Maybe, maybe you'll think about it, and maybe, or, you know, before the next meeting, and maybe if I'm still around, I can bring it up again, if not, maybe we'll hire somebody and I'll give it to them.
But, but this would be in an actual mobile home, Len, right? With a lot on the street.
That's, well, I kind of got the impression it's gonna be like a lot with a lot of acres, and I don't even know if you'd see the mobile home. Depending on what's allowed in the regulations, it probably doesn't matter if you can see it from the street.
Okay, now, do they say anything about, you know, they were, they were gonna have to use electric, water, septic?
Well, I think, I think they would clearly have to have a septic system or hook into the sewer. They'd have to have a portable water supply, whether it's a well or public water, and electricity. I mean, I think they would need all the utilities that a house would, would require. And, and honestly, I, unless there's something in the regulation that says otherwise, I would think that they would have to meet the minimum square footage of whatever the, you know, if it's a ranch house, say, whatever the minimum square footage is for a ranch house.
I, I think, I think we should put this on the table until Joe comes back and because we can't go on forever about this and get on with our meeting.
I'm good with that, Frank, thank you.
Okay, moving on, public participation. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any matter which is not on tonight's agenda? Or is likely to be on a future upcoming agenda? Anyone from the public have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, this is First Selectman Jason Bowser. I want to just take a quick moment and update the commission on where we are from a staffing perspective in terms of the Planning Department. As you folks know, the zoning enforcement officer resigned in April, and the town planner resigned two weeks ago. So we have both of those offices currently vacant. We have gone through the recruitment process and the first phase of the interview process for a zoning enforcement position effective today. And yesterday, the selectmen held a special meeting to authorize me to engage an outside company to serve as a consultant for zoning matters for the next few months. What that will do, as we're onboarding a new zoning enforcement officer and a new planner, is allow us to have some professional continuity in that office without overburdening Len and Joe, who are already overburdened with the, the work that they're doing to supplement that department. And it will also allow us to establish best practices in that department moving forward while we have those professional consultants and we're onboarding staff. I expect that whole, that whole process will probably last somewhere between four and five months. But I just wanted to update you guys that we've taken the staffing situation seriously and have made considerable progress in just the last couple of days.
Okay, good, thank you, Jason.
Thank you for the update.
Anyone else have any comments which are not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Minutes, the approval of minutes for July 14th. Any comments? Everybody okay with them?
They were long.
Yes, they were. If there are no comments, can I have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
I make a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from meeting number 1784 dated July 14th, 2020, as written.
Okay, this is 1784.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, there's a typo on today's agenda that has the same meeting number as the previous meeting.
Right. So I guess this is meeting 1785.
Oh, yeah. So my motion was right.
Right. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, show of hands? Okay, motion passes, any extensions? One.
Mike, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't present at the meeting.
Thank you.
Receipt of applications. Was also, I read that as part of the, the legal notice, but a special use permit for auto body work in respect to restoration at 32 North Road, map 113, block 17, lot 03A, in an M1 zone. Performance bonds, actions, permit extensions, road acceptance, I don't believe there are any.
No.
Okay, continued public hearings. Broadbrook Meadows re-subdivision. Windbrook Homes, 15 lot residential subdivision, property located at 131 Depot Street, corner of Depot and East, property owned by Sheila Saros. We'll start with the commission, any more discussion on this amongst ourselves? Any questions on what was discussed last week? New information? Anything on there that bothered anyone?
We received a letter from Merrick Kimmick, I don't know if you guys received it or not. I don't know how, if Jay wants to answer some of those points that were brought up. Maybe?
I got a response from Tim Coons, I got a letter this afternoon, I'm not sure if you got that, Jim, which covered some of it except for the environmental.
Yeah, I did see that.
I think it was something of a response, but there's definitely more to be discussed about it.
I also got that from Tim Coons.
Right, and I did also. I'm satisfied with Tim's responses. There is nothing else from, from the commission on this?
I'm satisfied with Tim's, and in terms of the environmental study, if in fact the soil is contaminated, which it possibly could be, because I'm just on the road from it and I have EDB, he's gonna have public, they're gonna have public water, so the concern is probably minimal if there is a concern, and if, and if there is actually any contaminated soil.
I think maybe his concern, he could probably speak to it more, but I know when they put in Hyundai Place in South Windsor and some of the other places that have what's considered contaminated soil from the fertilizer that's been on it, they've had to remove or bury the material on site or haul it away and have it burnt. I think that's, that's kind of a more modern way of dealing with it than before. If it was contaminated, they just built on it anyway, but I, I don't know if that might be what he's addressing or suggesting.
Well, well, I suppose we could ask, ask the developer to give us a soil sample test or have a soil sample test done, and I guess that will answer all our questions.
Yeah, and to tell you the truth, I would think that one would be done anyways, regardless of whether there was suspected chemical contamination to begin with.
This is Jay Ursery with JR Russo. I, I'm prepared to speak a little bit about that, if, and I don't know if this is the right time. That was the one item in Merrick's letter that Tim Coon did not address. And I'm ready to talk about it a little bit with you and talk a little bit about what past practices have been in terms of what's gone on in East Windsor over the last probably 20 or 30 years, but I'm not sure if we're ready for that yet, if there are other questions that other commissioners may have as well.
I'm ready, I'm ready for it.
I'd like to add another question to the mix for, to be addressed as we continue the hearing. We had conversation about public water being extended to the lots. I was wondering if there was a need for fire service as well, I don't know, out there, and I don't know if anyone's talked to the fire marshal for the town, and if there's a need or not a need.
That's a very good question.
Dan, this, this is Len. Generally, when Connecticut Water is extending a water main like that, we will, we will run the area by the fire marshal, and they will, they will recommend if they would like a fire hydrant or not. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. There may be one right near the intersection, I don't recall exactly.
There is one.
Yeah. So, I mean, they may require one down by, by, by the termination, or they may, they feel it's close enough to the intersection. They will run, it could generally be run by the fire marshal.
This is Jay, Jay Ursery again with JR Russo. There will be a fire hydrant on the extension going down East Road, and Len's right, it typically would be as close to the end of that extension as they can get, which would allow the fire department to pull hose northerly down East Road for quite some distance and still be able to, to pull off at the end of that, that line. So there would be a hydrant at the end with a blow-off, and, and the fire marshal hasn't actually reviewed this yet, but I know that's gonna happen, and there will be a hydrant at the end of this. It would be very uncommon for him not to require that, and I know they're going to.
Okay, that would also be a bonus for the people on the east side of East Road and on the other side, on the south side of Depot Street too, wouldn't it, Jay?
It would be, and, you know, he might also want one right across the entrance into Sullivan Farms, because Sullivan Farms does not have city water, and there are no hydrants, so if there were one, put that somewhere right across the intersection, they would be able to pull hose down Sullivan Farms Road.
May I add some information to you? We did pass this by the fire marshal initially, and he did not have concerns at that time, so should we review, send it back to him again?
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay, thank you.
Peg, what you sent the fire marshal may have been before there was conversation about public water, because that evolved in the last meeting.
I believe it was at the same time, because it was also referred to, to the water company, and the letter came through that the main was being extended, was being required to be extended. So why don't we just run, if you don't mind, if I, we run them by them all again? At least the fire marshal.
And, Dick, I, I'm, I'm sure we will send it back to the fire marshal, because I, I suspect that he wasn't aware that water was going to be extended up to the north there. And if there, if there wasn't a plan showing that, if the plan he looked at did not show a water main, then he's, he's not going to
Okay.
I would certainly send it back to him for review.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the commission?
Good for now.
I have a comment that could probably be brought up later, but I was reading through the P O C D about residential development, and I think it was, it's page 30, and it was kind of speaking to the matter of what we're talking about here, where our town has 80% of the town's zone for residential. You could read it through, but it, I think we should also look at our plan of conservation and development as some of the things brought up by people in the town and by Merrick Kimmick and other people who have an understanding of land and development that just because it fits our, our specific requirements doesn't mean it's necessarily right for our town. So I think as a board, we should refer back to some of the things in the P O C D.
Very good comment. If, Frank, if there's nothing else from the board?
I just might add to Tim's comment that our P O C D is just a guide, it's, it's not the Bible, so to speak, of our, of our development. And I'm, don't misunderstand me, it's not that I'm advocating this or, or either way, but I think we have to look at it in terms of a objective, real way, in terms of, you know, what the landowner can do with his land and what the surrounding community wants, so that's all I have to say, really.
If there are no other comments from the commission, I will open this up to public. And I would ask that one person at a time, please, and if you read the minutes or whatnot of the last meeting, please try not to repeat yourselves.
So, Dick, this is Jason.
Go, go ahead, Jay.
So, thank you. So I just want to reiterate that I did send around a rather lengthy email to members of the commission that was sent by a constituent who's also a budding property owner. I just want to make sure that that gets incorporated into the record and into your decision.
I don't, I didn't get one, Jay, unless you send it late this afternoon.
I did send it late this afternoon.
Yeah, I mean, yes, that, that could be put into the record.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No, I have not read that, has anyone else read that, read that?
I have not.
No.
I, I have it here in front of me, Dick, this is Len.
Yeah.
It's from, it's from Maureen DuClos. And it appears to be basically a synopsis of what, what.
I'm gonna take a second, and I'm gonna keep that muted.
I think, I think Galaxy A10E has to mute it while we're speaking.
Did you hear me?
Okay, Len, you're on, you're good.
Oh. I believe it's a, a synopsis of what Maureen said at the public hearing, there's 16 items anyhow, and a lot of it looks like items that she brought up at the public hearing. What you can, you can certainly, I would say, enter it into the record, and then during your deliberations, you, you can review it and read it. And of course, if she's here tonight, zoomed in, she certainly can speak to it.
Mr. Chairman, this is Frank. May I make a comment to the, to the, everyone that's tuned into this? Please mute while someone's speaking, because we're hearing all kinds of background noises with, between dogs and kids and whatnot. So please mute when someone else is speaking, thank you.
Okay. Anyone from the public now, one at a time?
Hello, I'm Maureen DuClos, the one who re, put that email in that you guys were just talking about, I'm 149 Depot Street.
Okay.
Do we get to hear the questions that you are referring to in Tim's responses so that we have a more informed decision on if we have more to say?
Yeah. Soon as I find it, here.
And the only other thing I wanted to say is that, I know someone stated that there's no concerns due to there being public water on these properties with the land contamination. I do have a huge issue with it, because it's gonna be putting it up in the air when they're digging this up, and I have asthma, as I know Carol across the street does, and I'm sure there's other people in the neighborhood, so that is a huge concern to me.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm looking for Kevin's.
Maureen, this is Frank.
Hi, Frank.
Hi. Do you know for a fact that when they're digging, whatever the contamination is, goes into the air?
Well, do I know for sure that, I mean, I've seen digging happen before and seen the dirt come flying across in the air, so I would assume that that would mean the particles in the dirt are coming across the air as well.
Yeah, I, I think that's another good, good reason why we should have a soil scientist go in there and take a look and give us all the information as what could possibly happen under all different circumstances. I think that will answer a lot of your concerns and my concerns.
Jay Ursery with JR Russo, I wonder if it would be proper now just to talk a little bit about that and some of the concerns, and maybe that would alleviate a lot of the questions from the residents as we move forward and maybe save a little bit of time, I'm not sure, but if I'm, if I could, I'm prepared to speak about it a little bit.
Please do, Jay.
So, I did a little bit of research with, in terms of single-family residential subdivisions here in East Windsor over the last probably a couple of decades or maybe a little further, and I couldn't find anything there where there was a requirement to do any soil testing, and even in subdivisions where there was no city water proposed. And, and these, in fact, were all subdivisions where there was agricultural activity, which really, quite frankly, is almost all of East Windsor when you go back and start looking at historical aerial surveys. There wasn't much of East Windsor that wasn't in farming at one point in time, but that said, this is something that came up probably before Reinhard Van Hollander, who was, Windbrook Homes, even got involved with this piece of land. I've been looking at this with various developers over the last probably two to three years, and had conversations with Mike Corona about it as well. And the thing that, the biggest concern here has always been EDB because of tobacco that's been in this area and in East Windsor. And Mike told me way back that, you know, there's city water available on Depot Street and there isn't on East Road. And I said, Mike, well, that may be true, he says, well, we know we have EDB in the area. And he said, I'm going to request to the town that you bring the city water down East Road, and, and we've done that. And in terms of the Health Department, that was his biggest concern, is the drinking water. Maureen is concerned about dust and so on and so forth, and I think that was another concern about maybe one of the other neighbors, and reading through the minutes was, you know, what kind of dust are we gonna get when, during the construction phase? And I don't live in East Windsor, I live in Ellington, and I live next to a working farm where the development rights were sold, and I bought it on purpose, because I like the farming neighbor, but I'm gonna tell you that the dust that comes off a row crop farm is substantially more than you're ever gonna get from a single-family residential subdivision. Where you have a situation where you're putting Where you have a situation where you're putting in row crop year after year after year, very dusty, you're kicking up the soil, you're creating dust. Once this subdivision is built, that's all gonna go away. That's not gonna be there anymore. You're gonna have lawns, permanent vegetation, which you don't have now. And you haven't had that there in decades. It's always been farmed and been in row crop. And so have most of the other subdivisions in that area. If you look across the street at Sullivan Farms where they don't have city water, that was all farmed at one point in time. If we go up the street on East Road and we look at the two subdivisions on the east side of the road, they have city water, also a farm. You go a little further and we could look just over the brook or just before the brook on the west side of the road, another piece of ag land developed ten, twelve years ago, no city water, all farmland. In fact, this particular farm, the Sergeant Farm, was also part of the property that was Perry Lane, Skinner Road, Pierce Lane. That was all part of the same farm that we're talking about here, the same farmers, the same activities, the same crops. It was all the same. It's all been developed as city water and as far as we know, there are no issues. Now, and there are many others. I mean, I've probably got two dozen here written down in this pad, and we don't have to talk about all of them. They're all over town. But if the commission is really concerned about this, and, and maybe you should be, I don't think the developer is adverse to doing a phase one environmental and getting some information. But I would just like to point out that with city water and we're not using wells, that typically this isn't really a major concern. If we didn't have city water and we're using wells, I would agree that it is very much so a concern, but in this case, I don't think it is. So it's really up to, to you, the commission, as, as how you wanna move forward with this. And if you're not comfortable and think you need a phase one environmental done, I don't think this particular developer is, is, uh, would argue with you and not provide that.
Okay, thank you, Jay.
Can I just, can I follow up to that? This is Maureen. Can I follow up to that?
Yes, you may.
So I'm not disputing that this has been used as farmland. I agree with that and Heidi does as well. But we know more about chemicals now. We switch, we've been living here, I think, five, five years, and the land was only farmed for one year while we were here. Within that year, we switched to city water because of it. We were lucky that it didn't, they didn't farm it anymore. I, I agree with what you're saying. Our concern is during the construction period and that that construction period could ultimately be a very long time. You know, reservoir has been going on for a little while. This is fifteen lots we're talking about. So we're talking more about the length of time that there will be in the air from each of the fifteen properties being developed.
And Jay Erstree with J R Russo, I understand Maureen's concern, and I don't wanna go back and forth with her. This isn't right. We should be going through the, the chair here, but the continued farming for decades to come is gonna be more concerning and create more issue if there is dust in the air with any type of possible contamination than construction of the single-family subdivision.
Be recognized for comment as well?
Uh, yes, Ryan, go ahead, please.
Appreciate it, sir. So my name's Ryan McLean. I represent the seller, the grandson of the seller and the great-great-grandson of the original owner of all the property in question, and actually somebody who lives with my small children across from an active farm that's being, uh, developed with four times the amount of houses. And I certainly appreciate all the concerns of the neighbors. I just want to introduce a couple other, other points here for consideration. You know, one, you know, certainly it's fair to question, and I, I support questioning the, the health implications of dust and dirt, but I would expect that this isn't the first time this question's come up, and I would expect that there's science out there to, uh, answer that question versus continuous, continuous delays based on, you know, unscientific conjecture. You know, I would expect that if these particles ended up airborne so easily and quickly, they wouldn't last for years. We haven't farmed the property, uh, for years. And frankly, uh, we haven't farmed it for years, um, but, but something has to be done with it. This isn't just sitting vacant for scenery, for, for public use. This is a costume my eighty-three-year-old grandmother who's, um, who's sitting by herself as a widow, uh, waiting for over a year and a half since we signed this contract to close and going through every single step that, out of respect for what's needed in order to close this land, my family can't farm it. It was on the market to be, uh, available to neighbors and the farmers. But I would just ask the committee that this, this is, um, really important, not only that this is handled correctly for all your residents, but there's people on the other side of the sale who are, who have been very patient with this property. So I would just ask that we can, um, you know, to whatever extent possible, not keep deferring action because of any, uh, claim or, or concern that can't be proven otherwise. You know, I just want to introduce that, that thought into this as well, please.
Thank you very much, Ryan.
Yeah, this is, this is Andre Matolsky, uh, at one forty-eight Depot Street. I live right across the street from it on Depot. And I know that there's been a lot of talk about that the soil's not an issue because you're putting in city water, but there are existing homes in very close proximity that are not on city water. And, yeah, after the last meeting, it was said that drainage wasn't an issue because capping the soil would actually reduce runoff. And if that water's not going, running off, then it's likely seeping in. Well, at the same time, we're gonna be digging ten, fifteen-foot basements and working the soil deeper down into the earth. And I just have concerns as to how that's gonna affect like my water table, because my water doesn't just come from what's under my property, and this farm is very close. I'm just concerned that the level of E D B in my well wouldn't go past what my filtration system can handle right now. And al- although, uh, city water is available, that comes at a cost. I, I mean, I can't just say, okay, and it's not twenty dollars. So I am concerned with how that's gonna affect my current well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I mean, I certainly don't have an answer to that. I'm, I am not a, uh, I am not an agrarian or aqua scientist, so I can't answer that.
Me neither. I just wanted to bring it up that, uh, this, these fifteen lots are not in isolation, that there's other properties around, many of which are on, still on wells.
And then on top of it, when you guys do start digging and, you know, I've only lived here, oh, also, this is his wife, Nicole Matolsky, um, on, on top of it, when you guys do start digging and the wind is, I live right across the street, um, the wind is insane. It's constantly a dust storm. So all of those chemicals that you guys are going down deeper and it's starting, it's gonna be on my kids' pillows, it's gonna be on my dishes, it's gonna be everywhere airborne. And it doesn't, it's not rocket science that chemicals causes cancer. So what happens in, you know, fifteen years when we're still developing these homes? And I, I, I'm just, I'm really concerned about the chemicals. You know, the houses being built, that doesn't bother me. The view doesn't bother me. It's the chemicals for my family that really bothers me.
Uh, this is Frank, Commissioner. Would all your questions be answered satisfactorily if the soil scientists and the appropriate people came in and did a test and answered your questions unequivocally saying, yes, it can be airborne, no, it can't be airborne, yes, it's dangerous, no, it's not dangerous? Would you be satisfied?
We already know, we already know the answer, that it's not safe.
But you do know.
There's chemicals that was, I know the answer. The chemicals have been in the ground for decades and decades and decades. It just doesn't disappear. So you're digging deeper, deeper. It's just gonna seep deeper into my well. This will cause harm to my family. I know it will. And to, to say that it's not is silly.
Uh, I, I'm not saying it is or it isn't. I'm just asking you a question if, in fact.
No, I, I.
You would not be satisfied with that? So no matter what, no matter what the builder or the developer wanted, you're not satisfied?
No, that's not what we're saying, but I would certainly like specifically in the report for, for it to address existing wells in the area. Would it, would it cause issues? Not just whether or not it's gonna cause issues for those fifteen lots that are being proposed that are gonna be on city water.
You, you presently have a well that has E D B in it, as I have, and it's being filtered through aqua pump, I'm sure. And, and then every, and the state comes in and they test it, and you're satisfied with the results that you get back, that your water's not contaminated. You're satisfied with that, but I get the impression you wouldn't be satisfied if that same, that same organization said there's no, no problem, or there is a problem.
My concern is that eight months down the road, the state comes in and says the filtration system wasn't enough, because it's not like they're actively monitoring it on a daily basis. And the fact that digging and capping the soil can cause the concentration to increase is what I'm saying, is, is what I'm concerned with, that I wouldn't know until after the fact.
And then what?
Again, my only, my only comment would be, you're assuming that by, by, uh, cutting down on the impervious coverage, that it's gonna go deeper. You're, you're making a lot of assumptions that, uh, personally.
No, I'm not. You guys are passing. You guys want to come.
If I may.
Yes, and concerned.
And Chairman of the Commission, we have established that the soil or the chances of the soil being contaminated and worked will cause a problem or may cause a problem. So that point is taken. Can we move on to if someone has another thing that either bothers them, either pro or con, please? Anyone from the public? There's still.
I think.
People out there. Nobody has a comment?
Hello?
Yes. Please, I do. Follow yourself.
Yes, my name is August Phillips, one thirty Depot Street. I think after they did the test, I should tell everything what you're gonna need. I don't think it'd be a problem with that, uh, the water goes downhill the other way anyway, so anyway, I'll just go by it. And I don't think it'd be an issue if the, this project went forward with, uh, with the developer. But I have to offer right now.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if I'm, I'm going through. And we know he does a perfect project too.
I'm, I'm sorry, but you're breaking up and I didn't get all that you said. I don't know if anyone else. Anyone else? Dick, are you hearing? No more comments from the public?
Dick, I'm sorry, this is Jason. I was just unmuting again. If I may, I just wanted to, I neglected to update the commission that the Board of Selectmen did approve the developers' agreement as a, a contract between the town and developers during subdivisions. So if the commission, uh, is inclined to move forward with this, I'd just remind you that that should be a, a condition of approval.
Uh, yes, absolutely. Matter of fact, I did circle that. Thank you very much. Okay, no, if there are no more comments, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've got one question for you. It, it sounds to me like we're kind of getting kind of ahead of things that we're looking at a subdivision approval, not a site development approval. There's still going to have to be more things that come in the future to actually develop and get building permits to do things. And I think that's probably the correct time when the level-one environmental study should be addressed. That's, that's, you understand where I'm going, is we're getting a little too ahead of ourselves, uh, in the process.
Yeah, I, I also agree, Mike, and especially because it's gonna be a lot-by-lot subdivision.
Correct. It's not a single one development plan coming, coming forward.
I'm gonna close the public hearing and put this back to the commission for any other final comments.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing for the, uh, application of, uh, Winbrook Homes LLC for a re-subdivision of a fifteen-lot residential subdivision and a special use permit to allow three rear lots and waivers to section two-point, one, one, one-point-three sidewalks, section five-point-seven landscape design, and section six-point-five for the subdivision regulations. Property located at one thirty-one Depot Street, corner of Depot Street, East Road, property owned by Sheila Sherrons.
Do we have a motion on the table? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. All those in favor of accepting the application, raise your hands.
My motion, my motion was to close the public hearing.
Oh, close the public hearing. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Hi.
Okay. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Hi.
Hi.
Unanimous.
Is Marty with us? Is Marty with us?
I am. Frank, I'm here.
Frank, you.
I haven't, I can't see you and I haven't heard yay or nay, so I'm just concerned.
Okay, any more, anything else on this by the commission?
Well, I think we, we gotta take a look at what's the additional term and condition to be added, um, that we're looking at, what a condition, twenty-four? For the, uh, developers' agreement?
Uh, yes.
You, do you have verbiage on that?
Uh, no, I do not. And I don't think there is any verbiage on it yet.
Can I question for Selectmen Bowser? You spoke of a developers' agreement, so how, how is that being applied to future subdivisions?
Sure. So, uh, the developers' agreement was introduced and accepted by this commission at your meeting two weeks ago and then by the Board of Selectmen, uh, two days later. It's basically, it, it codifies and outlines what the obligations of the developer are as the process moves forward, including making sure that there is adequate security in place to protect the town's interests as the development unfolds. And I did speak with the town attorney, and while zoning approvals are the judge of this commission, the Board of Selectmen is the contracting authority. So, um, the template that was put before you required town engineer to do assessments on what the security needs to be at the outset, and then requires the planning department to review that security in conjunction with the town engineer on an annual basis to make sure that, um, what securitized is still appropriate to cover the outstanding costs of completion. It's something that is used in, in other communities around Connecticut. In fact, we didn't make it up. We borrowed it, uh, and then adapted it to, um, to our community. So what's going to have to happen as that condition is, uh, the town planner and the town engineer, who conveniently, uh, are the same guy, uh, at, at this point, um, will need to make a determination as to what the security obligations are. Uh, and then that template is going to have to be, um, signed by the developer and approved by the Board of Selectmen. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Yeah, so would it be, would it be adequate if we wrote in a term, uh, condition of approval that the applicant will comply with all items of the town's developers' agreement? Would that be adequate to cover what you need to accomplish?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, or the, the development agreement in its entirety is heart and parcel of the whole approval.
Well, I just think going forward, that's just gonna have to be, uh, one of the boilerplate standard terms and conditions for any type of, uh, subdivision. for any type of subdivision.
Yes, it will.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I think condition 25 about the fire hydrants get checked by the fire marshal.
Okay. Fire hydrants per fire marshal's approval, right?
Yes. He didn't realize there was water going down the street, as Jay mentioned.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Frank. Are we all set on the waivers?
Uh, well, waivers are the sidewalks, the landscape design in the special use for three rear lots.
Uh, yeah, I, I have those in front of me, but is, is, do any commission members have, have any concern or questions?
This is Tim. I, I think I mentioned some last week, but I, I'm not really comfortable with those. I'm not really in favor of this subdivision as it is, but I think the cutting out the landscape architect is only hurting the town and it's, you know, helping the developer obviously, but it's a disservice to the town. As a landscape architect, I went to school for six years and really it's a lot of town and community planning falls into that. So if you so, some of the reason I'm really adverse to the project is because you got to offset open space with it with building and it's really community planning and I could talk for a long time about it, but without a landscape design or landscape architect there, I think it's really going to seem out of place. And I, so that was one of the things in the, the streetlights, there's already a streetlight on the corner. So for safety purposes, if we're going to be putting in a new subdivision, I think there personally should be streetlights. Says they don't want to miss the look of the sky, but there's going to be 15 houses with their lights on at night. And there's already a streetlight on the corner. So I also feel like there should be streetlights there. It's again, a benefit to the town, except for if we have to change a light bulb. And I had one more question on the sidewalks. I know before we had the option that the builder would pay 60% of a sidewalk fee if we have another place in town, which I'm really in favor of. I know there was some question on it when the last subdivision went in and the builder came in and kind of backpedaled and only paid 40%, but again, I think that's kind of taking away from the community and the taxpayers of the town and really just benefiting the builder and nobody else. That's what I have about waivers.
Well, I know on this, that particular sidewalk waiver after reading Kemet's letter and then Tim Coon's response, that that waiver of sidewalks would give the town less than, slightly less than four acres of land. I don't know how you balance out what's worth it sidewalks in the middle of nowhere or four acres of land maybe in the middle of nowhere.
Um, can I, the fee in lieu of open space? I heard a lot of comments from neighbors about how valuable the area was as wildlife habitat. And so I was wondering if taking, if the conservation, like North Central Conservation Commission or the Land Trust would be interested in a three and a half acre parcel to maintain his open space. I don't know if anyone has approached them or not.
And I don't know the answer to that either.
Dick, this is Jason again, just for, to make sure the board is fully informed. The sidewalks in proximity to the proposed development are not far away from where the connectivity trail is going to be in the spring of next year. We're doing that, that walking loop from Perry down Depot Street up Main Street, up reservoir. And it's not far, there's not much of a connection missing between where the subdivision would be and where the northmost point of that trail would be.
Um, this is Len, as a follow up to that, I, I don't know that we necessarily need to put sidewalks there, but I certainly would take the fee in lieu of sidewalks and granting a waiver. I mean, either way, I mean, if the, if the neighbors at this point don't want the sidewalks or comfortable without them, that's fine, but we certainly should take the fee in lieu of because we are going to have a pretty aggressive sidewalk program in the area. And we never have enough money for sidewalks, so I would, I would recommend that you at least take the fee in lieu of sidewalks.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Frank. In general, I am not in favor of sidewalks, especially sidewalks that go nowhere. But in this case, and I travel this road constantly, too many times a day, my license. You, you have to have a sidewalk there. That's, it's the topography of the road is such that if you have walkers or bikers, it's a dangerous situation. So I'm in favor for sidewalks in that development.
And then I, I am, I'm also would be in favor of the sidewalks. I just, if the, all, the only point I was trying to make is if, if the commission was thinking about granting a waiver that they did not want the sidewalks, I would recommend not granting a waiver. I would recommend at the very least taking the fee in lieu of sidewalks. That was my point.
Thank you. Thank you, Len.
Did somebody mention a fee in lieu of open space? I, I don't see that in my packet, but was, was that also a suggestion?
I don't think so.
So, so there is going to be an open space? But I don't see it on the plan either.
Quite a bit of wetland involved in this.
Is a wetland really considered an open space? It's, it's an unusable area anyway. So I, when I, I thought from an open space, I thought was basically a lot or three in this situation. But I don't see any open space on the map. I might just not be seeing it.
Go ahead. Hello, hello. I believe they, I'm trying to find the application here. I believe they were looking to do the fee in lieu of open space of $2,000 a lot. I believe that was the request, although I haven't found it here yet.
Oh, it's, it's on the map. It does say that open space. It's in a, it's in a little box on the second page, two of, two of seven. So that, that adds up to, I had a note from last week. I guess I didn't see that. That adds up to $30,000 versus how many acres would we get? I think, oh, I have a note here also. We'd get three and a half acres. Uh, where would that three and a half acres be? Would it be three and a half of the building lots that would satisfy some of the community in that they don't? You know, it kind of offsets the road frontage? Or would it just be some backlot that we would have to maintain and do nothing with?
It's usually the junky land in the back.
Is there, as a town and as the people who are supposed to look out for the health, safety and welfare of the people that live there and the rest of our community, is there any way that we could have the open space, say on the corner or somewhere else as a little park? That's something other towns have little parks throughout town, especially in a, this is kind of a densely residential for our town on that section, that maybe a little open space that a kid could actually go and play in would be more beneficial than backland or $30,000 isn't really very much.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I recall previous meetings that we've had that kind of spoke that we're trying to avoid the town picking up all of these postage stamp spot, uh, open spaces throughout that make it difficult for the town to maintain. That we were more looking for fee in lieu of unless it was contiguous with other open spaces the town already owned.
Uh, that's exactly correct. That's exactly correct.
This is Frank and I, I've been on the commission many years and that's always been our, our concern, most of our concern.
Uh, this is Len again, and yes, I'm currently dealing with the intersection on the corner of Amelia and Deerfield, which the town took as open space because there's a power line running through there. And for years it was hay and then a few years ago, the, the farmer decided not to hay it. And the owner of the adjacent property complained so much that I had to go out and bush log it. And, you know, we don't need little pieces of property like this where we have to go out and make it look like a lawn or whatever. Um, it, it's not feasible for us to maintain.
Now, Len, would that 30,000 fee in lieu of the open space, would that be more beneficial than the sidewalk, than the waiver of the sidewalks?
Well, it's two different items, Dick. There's, there's the sidewalk issue and then there's the open space issue. So the sidewalks, you put either the sidewalks or the fee in lieu of sidewalks. In the open space, you either get open space or the fee in lieu of open space, uh, which is 2,000 a lot. So it's kind of two different items.
Okay, and they can't be interchanged? They've got to be separate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I, Dick, would you mind if I said something about the open space stuff?
Yeah, Alan, go ahead.
Yeah, so just, I just wanted to concur with some of the other guys that were talking that the, the town has ended up with over the years, a lot of little chunks of land here, there and everywhere. Um, and we, I think at this time prefer the fee in lieu of open space. We use those. Uh, you know, we recently conserved very high quality farmland that will, you know, never get built on, um, in town. And, you know, so that's what it's used for and, and that fund is depleted because of that project. So it's important to make sure we build that back up. Um, and the open space is really meant to be open space. It's not, you know, parkland or anything. So um, it's, you know, also making sure that there's, I think the design of this project ensures and wetlands is, is, is open space. It, it kind of in this, in this regard where it's not something that you can build on. It's, it's open and you can't and it harbors all kinds of wildlife, all kinds of environmental benefits come of, come of it. So I think the fee in lieu of is what we want. Um, it's not, the open space is not intended to always build parks and that doesn't always work in, in these kinds of things. And then, you know, who pays for the park? Um, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Mr. Chairman, this is Frank again. Aren't we kind of putting the horse before the cart here? We have, we agreed that we're going to waiver the sidewalks to start with, and if we do, then this conversation is pertinent. But if we don't agree, if we want the sidewalks, then all we're talking about is ex post facto, after the fact.
True.
So, so our, I, I would assume our next step is to either approve the waivers or not and then have a discussion.
All right. What do the members think about sidewalks or no sidewalks? For where, where this is? The, the sidewalks would be running, they would have to run down Depot and East. There's really no other streets to run them down.
Mr. Chairman. Question is, since this is not again, a single development of 15 properties and it's going to go on a case, you know, lot by lot, uh, there's no guarantee that you will have the same developer for every piece of property. So who does the owners get placed on? If we're trying to impose sidewalks, well, we could be technically dealing with 15 different developers. And their lots are going to be sold off as individual building lots and the, the property owner can hire whoever they want to develop them.
Uh, but Mr. Chairman and Mike, that's the developer's responsibility. If he decides to do it all at once he can, it's, it shouldn't be in our, our concern that who builds a house or when they're build a house. Our concern should be there's going to be 15 houses there sooner or later and should there be a sidewalk there? That's, that's a simple, to me, it's a simple question.
Yeah, and it would basically mean that every house has to have a sidewalk, except for the rear lots.
I see it, I see it differently.
Opinion is, and this is just my opinion now, is that sidewalks at the end of Depot and way out on East Street are just not going to be used by enough people to make them worthwhile.
But Mr. Chairman, if I heard, if I heard our first selectmen, uh, selectmen Bowser saying that our, our proposed program coming down the line shortly is going to be very close to other sidewalks that are going to be connected. And I'll say again, I'm in, in general, I am not in favor of sidewalks going nowhere. But from what I understand, this is a, a good, a good deal to have sidewalks.
Uh, Jason, if I may, how close would this come to making the continuity?
Um, my recollection is about 250 feet, but I'm going to ask Len to clarify that because I suck with distances, but it, the, the loop comes to the top of, my understanding is the loop comes to the top of Perry Lane. Um, and this is, I mean, the southwesternmost point of this development would be just at the bottom of the hill.
We have an open line.
Is that right? It's a half mile from the corner of East and Depot to the end of Perry Lane. And it's, uh, point two miles, oh, no, it's point one five miles from the end of the subdivision to Perry Lane.
Len, can you fill in some?
Okay, I'm checking it out here. I, I brought up the GIS. I'm going to measure from a line from Perry Lane to, I, what I believe is where the first lot would, it's about, you know, I don't know, 1,100 feet? Something like that, 1,000 feet, 1,100 feet? Let me just bring the key map up. Trying to hold to the right spot.
That's the same thing I came up with. It's, it's under 1,000 feet. I think with a subdivision like this, at this time, we're going to get people from New York who are used to having a sidewalk and they're going to have kids if they're moving to a new subdivision. My feel is that.
Or GIS numbers. You want to, you know, they're 1,000 feet roughly.
Okay, that would be, that would be the total distance left with no sidewalks.
That, yes, that would be the distance between Depot Street and Perry Lane intersection and the property corner, the most westerly property corner of this development.
Mr. Chairman, there, there's one other problem with this is that there are already two other private residences along Depot Street, which there would be no obligation to put sidewalks in front of existing residences. So now we're talking a segmented sidewalk?
Well, that's true.
But, okay, you're absolutely correct, but the town still owns what, 10 to 15 feet back from the center of the road?
Okay, Lenny, straighten us out.
So per se, I think the town could put sidewalks in front of your house, like it or not. I mean, I just hate to.
That's only about. This is Tim.
Measure generally 25 feet from the center line of the road. We have a 50 foot ride away. And generally speaking, um, our property goes out 25 feet each side of the center line of the road. Um, if it's, if the road's exactly in the middle of all the roads, which is not always the case, but generally speaking. So that, that is a good point. There are two properties, I believe. Yes, there are two properties that are privately owned. The developer would not have, um, well, that's an interesting question. I don't know if you could make the developer connect between those or if you leave it blank and then I have to pay to do it. That's interesting.
Either way, it's about 400 feet of road frontage on those two houses combined. And they have about 2,000 feet of road frontage that they'd be having to put in as, as the developers. developers. If they went from corner out to each boundary, it'd be about 2,000 feet if you skip those two houses plus an additional 400 for those two houses.
But see, the problem here is this is not a traditional subdivision where you're going to have one developer doing this. These, this is just individual lots being, you know, sold off and it would be next to impossible. You don't know which order these are going to get developed in and, you know, who do you put the obligation on if you're trying to look for somebody to put sidewalk in front of, uh, an existing property?
Is this not something we could make a condition of approval?
No, if this were one person coming before us and say, I want to build 15 houses, it's handled so differently than, there, there's no development plan here. It's strictly drawing some lines on a map and dividing the property up. There's no development plan at this point.
But, Mr. Chairman and Mike, there's only one person applying, making application for this permit. Isn't it his obligation, isn't it his obligation to meet our requirements? No matter what he does, maybe he decided to build them all at once. It's his obligation as the applicant to go by what we say. We don't, we, we don't have purview of saying, you know, you build one tomorrow, you don't have to put it in. You build one yesterday, you had to put it in. I mean, it's the developer, it's, it's the applicant.
You're, you're missing my point. This is more of a subset, they're dividing a piece of property. It'd be the same if you owned two acres next to your house and you wanted to split it into two one acre lots. That's it. You're not doing anything else but splitting up the land and then I'm going to put it on the market. There's no development plan. All they're doing is cutting up the piece of property into 15 pieces.
Well, I, I know I'm thoroughly confused, being a member for 25 years. I, I, I thought this was a subdivision, but you're really saying it's not a subdivision?
No, there, there's nothing been presented to say that there's a developer with a plan to put anything in there other than they're going to cut it up. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jay. Uh, I mean, that's how it's been presented, how I look at it is that they're looking just to draw lines on the map into 15 segments and then put it on the market and it's 15 available building lots.
Well, Mike, it appears to me that they've gone through, uh, what they feel to be the requirements for subdivision and, and that's what they're submitting it as, the subdivision.
Let, let me try and clear, let, let me, it, it's a little different. This is a little bit of a different situation because it's, it's, uh, it's all frontage lots, there's no road being built. However, if, now let's say that you require sidewalks. If you require sidewalks, we're going to bond for sidewalks for whatever the distance or length of sidewalks is and it's going to become part of that development agreement. It'll be noted in the development agreement that there's, uh, X number of feet of sidewalk. The bond for that is going to be X number of dollars and that bond is going to be held until the sidewalk is completed. One more, I guess, uh, there, there could be two different ways to do this. They could do the sidewalks as they develop the individual lots, which they do at times in subdivisions that are clearly controlled by one person where there's a road. They, 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 sometimes they put all the sidewalk in, sometimes they do it as they develop the lots. Do the same thing here, I would think. You could either put the sidewalk in as each lot is developed or you could tell the developer, we want the sidewalk put in, you're, you're extending the water main, we want the sidewalk put in, it's the same thing. We're not going to, that, that water main is not going to be extended 200 feet at a time as a lot is developed. That water main is going to be installed. The first house that he wants to build on, on the East Road, he's going to have to extend that water main all the way to the end. You can require the same thing for the sidewalk. The developer will, the sidewalk's going to be installed. They have to cut the sidewalk or are putting driveways to either reinforce the sidewalk or have the driveway run through, then that's what's going to have to happen.
That's, that's exactly the way I feel, Len. Uh, Jay, uh, why don't you chime in on this and see what you have to say? I'm anxious to hear you because you're very logical and sensible.
Close the hearing, but since you asked me, but what Lenny says is exactly right. You have an applicant, uh, Windbrook Homes as the applicant and developer and if the commission decides they want sidewalks, it's his responsibility to install the sidewalks. That would be considered a public improvement in the subdivision approval and as Lenny said, it would be bonded and be part of your developer's agreement with this particular developer and they would have to be built.
That's, that's, that's my, my understanding.
Uh, if I may, I'm the attorney for the seller, or not for the seller, I, yeah, the seller of the property, I'm, I'm her attorney. And I'm also, I've been an attorney for 20 years. I was on the zoning board as the commissioner in New Britain for eight years, the zoning board commissioner. I've seen plenty of subdivisions, I've done plenty of subdivisions and.
Excuse me, what is your name, please?
Emmanuel Mangiafico. So this is, you call it a subdivision, but it's not a subdivision. It's an as of right lot splitting. They meet all the criteria to split these up. You can certainly put, not restrictions, but, uh, conditions on it. The town can put a sidewalk assessment at any time, the town can put a sewer assessment at any time and then the owners of that area would be responsible to pay for it. It happens all the time in different towns.
Mr. Chairman, the, the public hearing is closed.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. I just, very good.
So the bottom line here is going to be, do we require sidewalks or do we not? Yes or no?
I'm in favor of requiring sidewalks. This is Tim.
Let's take, um, this is Frank, let's take a vote and find out, otherwise we'll be here till midnight.
Are you doing a straw vote or you're doing, we just do these separately from the motion, don't we? Do the motion first and then the, then the waivers?
Waivers first.
I believe, hey, it's Len, I believe what you need to do is you need to, it, it's a request for a waiver of sidewalks. So you need to, you, you need to approve or deny the request for the waiver of sidewalks. And then if you, if you deny the request for a waiver of sidewalks, then you have to decide whether or not you want sidewalks or a fee in lieu of, I believe. I'm not a real town planner, but that's my belief.
Opus out Jay again.
We're not going to grant a waiver for sidewalks. So necessarily that doesn't even need to be part of the application because there's not going to be a waiver.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has requested it for, we have to put it to a vote.
Correct. All right, so then let's have a motion to take a vote on the waiver of sidewalks.
Well, I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we do not approve the waiver for sidewalks.
Second.
A show of hands to deny the waiver.
This is Frank, denies.
Okay, I deny.
Tim denied.
Mike, Jim?
Okay.
Okay.
Deny. Okay.
Waiver for sidewalks is denied.
Okay, should we go ahead and address the other waiver that they're looking for?
Uh, which is landscape design.
Correct.
I make a motion to deny the, uh, landscape design waiver.
Hey, there's a motion to lit, to deny the waiver for landscape design, is there a second?
Not for me.
Any discussion?
Well, we have, we haven't, we don't have a second. If we don't have a second, we don't have a motion.
Motion fails.
Correct.
So I will propose another motion to approve the landscape design waiver.
We have to have a second for that before we can vote on it.
We have a second on the approval of the waiver for lands, on, uh, for, for landscape design.
What, what, would you repeat the motion, please?
The motion, I make a motion to approve a waiver of requiring the landscape design.
I, I second that.
So clarify, your, your motion, Mike, is to accept the landscape, you want landscape design?
Yes, I do.
No, I'm not, not looking for them to require to hire a landscape architect.
All right, so we're, the motion was to not require a landscape architect.
Correct.
So we would be.
It's to approve their, it's, it's to approve their request for a waiver. Of section 5.7, requiring landscape design.
That would be section 6.5, correct?
No, 5.7.
Excuse me, guys, I, I'm hearing two or three motions here. Guys, like, you are approving the waiver for the landscape design? Mike?
That, that is what I'm, that is what I'm proposing, to, to approve the waiver, not requiring the landscape design.
Not requiring, okay. Okay, and so was it Frank that approved, seconded that or? Frank, did you second that?
Oh, yeah, yes, I did.
Okay. Okay, I guess you need a vote. I apologize.
So we'll have a vote for all those in favor of granting the.
Do we have discussion about it?
Sure, go ahead. I, I called for that before, nobody said anything, but that's all right, go ahead.
No, okay, I think I stated before, it's, that's not really hurting anybody except for the town. Just wanted to throw that out there again.
What do you mean by hurting the town, Tim?
It's, uh, it, it would be only benefiting the town by having a landscape architect design it instead of letting just the builder put two trees in front of every house versus having a landscape architect. I don't know exactly what they would even design for a farm field, but I think having, to, to waive that just seems like it's benefiting the builder and not benefiting our community at all when this subdivision also benefits nobody except for the builder. Clearly, nobody in town is in favor.
Uh, Tim, this is Frank. Have we had problems in the past with the developer not doing what we asked him to do in terms of landscape design?
They all put two trees in front of the house, but on Middle Road, for example, we have three houses that looked like they were just set down in the middle of a field that they don't have windows around the sides and there's two trees in the front yard, so they're really unattractive versus if a landscape architect were to take a look at that, they'd say, going by any landscape architect principles, you would, you would not do that. He would screen the side that was just siding with no windows to make it attractive for the rest of the community and for anybody that drives by anytime.
I can re, I can remember many of our landscape discussions that, regarding these subdivisions that we, we've done, we've asked them to do more than what they presented on the plans, as Jay can probably confirm. And we've never, as far as I know, we've never had a problem. Now, I don't remember that one on Middle Road, what we did there, but, uh, you're right, you're right about Middle Road.
Well, I, I guess, I guess to try and put an end to, not on an end, but to speed things up maybe just a little bit, um, bottom line, well subdivision approval, it requires the street trees. That's all that's required in subdivision approval is the street tree. And for the rear lots, it requires a line of the shrubs as a, as a border, if you will. Um, you don't need a landscape architect to, you, you cannot require, this, this is a subdivision, this is a, somebody try, this is no, somebody trying to split up a lot in half. You can't make a landscape design of their lot if, if they don't want to do it and they're going to do what they're going to do for any individual lot. It, it, you have the ability to require it, but you really don't unless you're in a PRD or your MFDDs or any of those special permit type things or districts for a straight subdivision. This is, you, you really, you know, they're, if they're subdividing the property in accordance with the existing zoning regulations and their lots meet requirements, you can't put special, exception, it's not a special permit, you can't make special requirements.
I guess I don't understand why we even have a waiver on here for it then.
Well, I, I don't either, it, but.
Evidently, evidently it came out of section 5.7, so it is a requirement.
So we still have a motion on the table and the motion is to approve the waiver of landscape design. Um, and can we have a second on that motion if there's no more discussion?
I, I think it's been seconded, hasn't it, by me?
Yes.
All right, in that case, uh, let's have a vote, all those in favor of waiving landscape design.
Could you please do it as a roll call?
This is Frank, I'm in favor of granting the waiver for the landscape design.
Thank you. I have Mike.
This is Tim.
I am in favor of granting the waiver on landscape design.
Okay, I'm looking for Jim Thurs and I'm looking for Tim.
I, I did already, I said.
You're in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
And Tim, you're against?
Tim will abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Tim, you're abstaining?
Okay, thank you, I apologize.
Okay, um, realistically, what we're, all we're going to do here is to accept an application. This is, this is.
Mr. Chairman, we still have streetlights.
Pardon?
We still have streetlights for waiver.
I didn't see that here.
Mr. Chairman, we have three waivers, sidewalks, landscape and streetlight, streetlights, section 6.5, the last, the last one on the memorandum.
Um, I'll, I will just give you my own personal opinion here on the streetlights. I'd like to see all the utilities underground in lamp lights instead of big overhead streetlights.
Is that something we could require?
I don't think that is, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't think you can require it. I think Jay would know better, but if the, if the, if the houses are within CLP's purview, I think it's 150 feet or 200 feet, they can run above utilities. You have to understand here that there, there's already telephone poles in the area, so if you're going to require streetlights. so if you're gonna require streetlights, you're likely, they're not gonna come in and put decorative poles next to a pole that, I wouldn't think, next to a pole that has, you know, wires and cable and phone and everything. If you want streetlights, I'm thinking you're gonna get the overhead lights that are all through town. If it was a road, a subdivision road, a new development, that would be great, you could require that, but in this instance, I don't believe that's appropriate.
The rear lots will probably get underground just because of distance, but all the rest of the ones are on the main road, they're gonna be above, guaranteed.
So pretty much no matter what, then, CLP, CLP or whoever's source, whoever, is going to run a pole X number of feet apart, no matter what.
I'm assuming there's already poles there. Everybody has, actually, I know there's poles there. Everybody has, everybody has power there. What they would do, if you require streetlights, you determine where you'd want the street light, and then CLP will come out and and the developer will pay to have it put on the pole, and then I'm gonna pay for it every year in my light bill, every month, every month in my light bill.
Are there already lights there?
I think Jake...
There's one on the corner. There's one right on the corner.
Mr. Chairman, if we can expedite this a little bit, I am in favor of the waiver for streetlights on 6.5, section 6.5. I think that, I don't think we need six streetlights there.
Okay, we have a motion to waive the requirement for streetlights. Is there a second?
What'd he say? He wanted to know, how do I figure?
Have we made a motion yet? Well, I will make a, I, no, I just, that was my personal, that was my commission, as a commission member. I will make a motion that we grant the waiver for streetlights, section 6.5, on the application of Broadbrook Meadows subdivision, Winbrook Homes LLC.
We have a motion on the table, any discussion?
No, I'll second.
That was Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's up for vote. All those in favor of granting the motion for no streetlights, section 6.5.
Frank says yes, waiver it.
Mike says yes.
Jim Thurs, aye.
Dick says no.
Thank God.
Dick, I apologize. Were you in favor or opposed?
I was in favor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote on this application?
It is my humble, it is my humble opinion, and I don't mean to put any excess burden on the applicant, that there's been so much confusion and discussion and lack of complete understanding about this whole situation with regard to the public, that I would like to, I would like to have a postponement to in the next meeting. But if you want to, if you want to vote, I could do that also, obviously.
This is Tim, I would agree with Frank.
Anyone else?
Well, we have strayed so far off the normal path here. The fact that we've already approved waivers, are we obligated to vote on this?
That's a, that's a very good question, Mike. I didn't think of that. That's a very good question. I think, I think you're absolutely correct. I'm not the Roberts Rules expert here, but I think, I think we do have to vote on it. And I think Jay Ursery could probably help us out a great deal with that.
Jay Ursery, for the record, in terms of Roberts Rules, I'm not exactly sure whether you're required to, although I will say in the past, this commission and any other town commission I've been to with regard to subdivision resub applications, once they started to it and vote on waivers, they continue would vote on the entire process. The only item that is still kind of hanging out there, though, is though you denied the waiver for the walks is, and I'm assuming that means you want the fee in blue of the walks. Not sure.
I thought that was the consensus, but I might be wrong. We've talked so much about all, everything except the real nitty gritty that I'm, I'm ready for my Coke. That's Coca-Cola, that is.
Are we supposed to be voting on the rear lots, too? Is that a special use permit? Is that a separate vote?
Well...
No, it's written in part of it. That's part of it. We haven't even talked about the rear lots, it's part of it.
I, you know, we're in, we're in trouble here. I, we're in serious trouble in my mind. We just don't know what's going on here. I mean, we, with all due respect, we just don't know what's going on. I think we have to, we have to get our act together and straighten this out at a different time, even though, even though convention says we should vote on it because of, we've, we've talked about the waivers. I'm frustrated, to say the least, and I'd like, I like other members to see how they feel, if they're ready, if they're ready to vote, not vote, but if they're ready to vote.
Jay Ursery, I could just chime in here for a second. Commissioner Thurs is correct that you do need to vote separately on the special permit for the rear lots.
Well, I mean, I'm gonna take responsibility for a lot of this, but I'm, I am with Frank here, you're just, it's, we really don't know what's going on, and we haven't even begun to talk about the rear lots yet. So I'm for a postponement.
Dick, this is Jason. If I could just suggest that it may be better to delay a decision than to make the wrong decision or to make, take action on the wrong question.
I agree 100%, Jason. You're absolutely correct.
We can, I can work with Len and our new consultant to make sure that we have something prepared and proper for the commission to take up for your next meeting. I know that that does cause a delay for the developer, but sometimes these approvals can find themselves in the court proceeding, and it's, it's better to make sure you do it right than do it fast.
I agree, I agree, and I think Joe gets back, I think Joe can help us a lot, being the chairman for so long, he knows exactly what goes where and when it goes, so a delay is in, is in order.
Mr. Selectman, point of order, can, we also have to look at the fact that we closed the public hearing. If we want to have further discussions about rear lot subdivisions, does that need to be now a new public hearing? Do we need to start this whole mess all over again?
Mike, that's something that is really up to your bylaws. That's not a Roberts Rules thing, that's a bylaws thing, but Len's taking notes, and we can make sure that we actually get a legal opinion on that so that you guys are on sure footing for your meeting in two weeks.
I, I, I don't believe we need a legal opinion on that, honestly. I, you have held a public hearing. I, on the other side of the fence, I spent many years presenting, as Jay is doing tonight and as other developers do, most of my career, actually. You've had a public hearing, you took public comment, you made your own comments, you have a record of the public hearing. You now, you've closed the public hearing. You now have the right to deliberate. You can deliberate with town staff, you can deliberate with me, you can deliberate with Jason. You can deliberate if we had a wetlands person, I mean, you can deliberate with town staff, and we can hash out the rear lot issue, whatever. You just cannot make any additional public comment. But you've taken public comment, you have minutes, you know exactly how, you know. Now it's up to the commission to take into account comments that were made and deliberate and make a decision whether or not you like the rear lots, and, and, you know, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the motion here, I just dug it out, that actually got it at the last meeting, the motion to approve this provision. It's really not proper because it doesn't talk about approving the rear lots, which are special permits separately, and there's nothing that talks about the individual waiver approval or denial, which you already did. So could you approve it tonight? If you knew how you felt about the rear lots and what have you, but it's probably gone on enough that you the next meeting and feel a little uncomfortable about it, but you can do it. You don't need to have a, have another public hearing.
Alright, thank you.
I was looking at this prepared motion, and we butchered this thing so bad that I wouldn't even know how to present it.
So there again, we could prepare a new one for your consideration for the next meeting.
Well, I, hearing that, I make a motion that we postpone the vote on the application for the Winbrook Homes LLC subdivision until our next meeting, which would be August 11th, 2020.
I second that motion. Any discussion?
Alright, we'll just have a vote.
This, Frank votes in favor of postponing until the August 11th meeting.
Jim Thurs, aye.
Mike Kowalski, aye.
Dick Sullivan, aye.
Tim Moore, aye.
Thank you.
Margaret, good luck to you in writing up these minutes. Just sent ya.
Sorry, it's my fault, but...
No, no, no. No, no, no.
Either way, I'm still looking at a hunk of land that somebody wants to put houses on, doesn't know who's gonna do it or where they're gonna go or anything else.
Pardon that.
Okay, new business, 68 Newbury Road.
Excuse me?
Can we take that as, the public hearing's been closed?
Yeah, I'm sorry, or the seller of the land, I was, I appreciate that it's closed. I just wanna, can I ask one question before it's closed? Just for, I mean, we're delaying two weeks, can I delay the meeting for 30 seconds?
No, definitely.
What's that? I just wanna clarify, if the reason for this third delay is because the buyer didn't give you adequate information to make a decision, or if it was because of committee unpreparedness, just so I can, I can report that back or make decisions with the buyer accordingly, as a property owner in the town, it's important information for me to understand.
I think it's a combination of both.
I think we should move on to the next order of business.
I, I, I have a feeling that, that that question's being asked for a legal reason, so I think that we should just move on. We've closed the public, the public hearings closed, and if the developer, if the developer wants his attorney to get in touch with the town hall, he can do so.
Fair enough. 68 Newbury Road, we can push that down to other business. Old business site visits. Joe?
Mr. Chairman, just a minute, are we going out of order here?
Yes.
Don't we have to have a motion to go out of order?
Okay, some motion to go out of order.
I put that on the agenda so we can discuss it.
Okay, then we won't go out of order. 68 Newbury Road, informal discussion regarding the zoning wetlands issue. Thanks, Dick. I appreciate what you were trying to do for me.
I outrank Joe. Hey, we, our friends on Newbury Road are firing up again, and Mr. Sauerhoffer and I are not, hold me there. Zoning enforcement, wetlands enforcement and town planner people. Mr. Wilcox has sent a number of emails to DEEP, I guess DEEP has been out there at one point. Hazardous response team was called because of a hazardous material which wasn't out there, according to the gentleman from DEEP. He was gonna refer it to his person at Water Resources. I put two calls into the gentleman, and he hasn't returned my call yet. I really intended for Joe and I to go out to the site today, and we just got so many other things going on that it, that it just didn't happen. I did call Steve Dearborn and tell him I was gonna try to get out there, which I never did. And one of the complaints was that in the, in the 100-foot buffer, it's supposed to be vegetated according to Mr. Wilcox. Steve has recently gone through, and he actually, he actually heralded it, but what he did was he had reseeded it with grain and heralded in the seed. So if we get a little bit of rain, we're gonna have grass there. I guess I, I'm gonna keep it brief. I just want the commission to know, and I had it put on the wetlands agenda as well. You know, Mr. Wilcox is making complaints, and he's apparently not happy with the town because we don't have the permanent staff in place. But I don't think that Joe and I should be tackling this, and then we're gonna step out of the picture in, I hope, two or three or four weeks, and as we all know, this is gonna go on far longer than that. I think we ought to have somebody in there that takes it from whatever it's gonna be at the beginning to the end. And I just kind of wanted you guys to be aware of it, basically. And see if you had any comments.
The feud continues.
Much.
Well, I mean, it's simple, there's nothing we can do to make them like each other, but we have to make sure that they're in compliance, that's all.
Correct. It's, it's a he said, she said thing, or I guess it'd be a he said, he said thing. There's probably some noncompliance on both sides. I don't know, like I say, we haven't gotten out there today. Honestly, the times I've been out on the Dearborn property, he seems to, you know, run a pretty clean operation, considering he's, he's making mulch and grinding brush and what have you. We have neat piles, and he seems to be pretty organized with the way he's doing. I know Mr. Wilcox is, you know, concerned about the buffer at times and what have you, but I'm thinking that the water resources person from DEEP is gonna either call me back or go out or do something, and I'd rather see what they have to say before we stick our fingers in there.
I agree, Lenny.
I agree. It's, it's probably nothing we're ever gonna be able to solve regardless.
I would venture a guess not. I have to agree with you. Until one of them moves.
Okay, was that it, Len?
Yes, I just wanted to make you aware of it. I wanted to bring it to your attention. I mean, I don't know how far this is gonna go. Mr. Wilcox does have a tendency to... Uh, Mr. Wilcox does have a tendency to set out a number of, I've got, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven emails since the 16th of July, and then they keep going beyond that. The, the latest one being 6:03 PM yesterday. Um, I didn't know, in case he started emailing commission members, or, I don't know if he's on Facebook, I'm not. In case I start looking bad on Facebook, I want you to know the situation.
Okay, fair enough.
I'm good, thank you for your time.
Welcome, thank you for your time. Um, an old business site visits, Joe?
We missed one other new business. We, you, you skipped over TBK Ventures?
Yeah, I know, I was trying to get Joe done.
Oh, okay.
Well, you're going out of order, do you have to make a motion for that?
Let's take care of them, Dick, it's fine. I'll wait.
All right, thank you, Joe.
I think it's gonna be very quick.
New business, TBK Venture LLC and KBT Realty LLC, 200 South Main Street, Warehouse Point. Request for site plan modification for construction of a 1,875, 74 square foot building in an existing paved area.
Excuse me, Dick, I think we advertised that wrong, Len pointed out, he's doing two buildings rather than the 1,800 square foot one. And can maybe clarify that for us?
Yes.
You mentioned, Len, that we advertised it wrong, it is actually two commercial buildings?
It is actually two commercial buildings totaling 4,202 square feet. It doesn't, you're not having a public hearing, so I don't think that much matters, it's.
Which is clarified.
He's got a building going here, uh, I believe when Ruben, um, wrote the, uh, acceptance for the last meeting, he, there is one building. It's gonna be, uh, 1,874 square feet, but there's another building that's gonna be 2,328 square feet.
Okay.
I would just make that, and if you see the motion that I, um, prepared for you, it does, uh, reference to commercial buildings totaling 4202 square feet.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a, does everyone have the site plan for this?
Yeah, I got it.
I do.
Okay, and I do. This is basically, thi- this was basically approved quite a while ago. Uh, but now they're actually making the total square footage of the building smaller. I know they had a problem with drainage in the back, and I think that has been corrected.
For Chairman, this is Jay Ursery with Russo's, I could speak to it a little bit if you'd like. And I, my, uh, technical abilities here are a little challenged, but I might be able to put the thing on the screen. I could try. Can everybody see that?
No.
No? No, as I said.
So Jay, this is Jason, there's a green button in the middle that says share screen. You will access that.
Host disabled participant screen sharing, it's telling me.
I'm not sure why this is, Jason, it's open.
Let me try it again. Anybody see it? How's that, can you see it now?
Yeah, there you go.
Let me see if I could figure out how to turn the pages.
I've been trying to figure it out that my whole life.
You need a young, you need a young mind here to figure these things out, so here we go. So I've got the, the layout plan here, I believe, that you're looking at now. And, and this particular property, there's two buildings, as Len had said, and I'm gonna put the cursor on the one to the left rear, which is here, and then the other one here to the south side, kind of in the center. The building to the left rear essentially is a replacement for a building that was destroyed by fire last year. I, I think it was last summer, I don't remember exactly. The building was located essentially on the north property line, part of it was over the line, so we moved it, put it in this particular location. They also added a second building here to the south side. It's about 2,300 square feet, I believe, which again is gonna be used for a combination office and, and motor vehicle use, which all of this is in motor vehicle use, this was a site plan that was approved by the commission. I think in 2014, um, it was done by Palmberg and Son at that point in time. And you may recall, when we came in with ACI Auto, which is just to the south of this, their property came off of this piece, and we came back to you with a plan that showed a separate lot right here where this other building is going, and that had to do with a mortgage that was still in place, we're now combining it. This'll be all one piece. These buildings are going on existing paved areas or gravelled surface areas, there's actually a reduction in impervious coverage. The drainage issue that, I'm not sure, one of the commission members mentioned it, I think was alleviated, there is a basin that was built back here, um, that was part of the 2014 approval, I believe, and that is in place. There may have been some erosion there prior to that, so. This is fairly straightforward, it meets all the requirements of within the zone, we reduced impervious coverage, we meet the parking requirements, setback requirements, we're adding some landscaping and green space that isn't currently there. There's sewer water, gas available, uh, obviously electricity available for all of the development that's going on here, so it's pretty simple. So I'll leave it at that as it's getting late.
Any comments from the commission?
None.
Any, any additional site lighting or anything like that, Jay?
Uh, no, they're not proposing any additional lighting. I think the only thing that's really there now is, is building, like, building lit, um, wall packs and that type of thing. And he isn't proposing any additional lighting or signage at this point in time. Signage would have to go through the zoning office with a zoning permit if they were to do something. And, and we're not proposing any additional lighting.
Okay, I'm good.
I'm good, I'm all set. Okay, if everyone's, uh, all set, no more questions, et cetera. Do we have a motion, uh, on this application?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the application of TBK Ventures LLC and KBT Realty LLC, 200 South Main Street. Requesting for a modification for an approved site plan for the construction of two commercial buildings totaling 4,202 square feet. Building to be utilized for automotive oriented business, property owned by TBK Ventures LLC and KBT Realty LLC. Uh, LLC, it's in the B2, A2, and M1 zone, map 22 block 5, lot 8, 80, 81 dash 1, 81 dash 2. In compliance with terms and conditions, uh, 1 through 10 on page 2, and 11 through 16 on page 3, of a memo from Leonard J. Norton, professional engineer dated July 27th, 2020.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Frank, aye.
Okay.
Mike, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, Joe?
Wow. Okay. So, um, we can start off with the letters I, um, attached to the packet. If y'all got a copy of them, they're in the packet, and I believe they went out by email also. I hope.
Got it.
Adam?
Okay, you can, um, see, I got some great responses back from both those individuals, uh, 131 North Road. Uh, he is actively, he's got actually a dumpster there the last couple of days, they're actively cleaning it up, he's removed a couple of the cars. It would be my recommendation that we monitor him, and, well, you know, I'll do my weekly visits as I've been, and just monitor him and give you guys an update at the meeting. But, um, I would, the, the fines are hanging over his head, and they, and, um, he's aware of it, and I would just say that with your recommendation, I would just say, let's just, he's working at it. So I would like to just, you know, let's see, let's let, give him a little bit of time to see how much he cleans up and how fast he cleans it up. I mean, economically, you know, I, I don't think he has the money to just go in there and do a clean sweep. And I don't know if, um, I don't know if we wanna, you know, push that on him, I guess. It would cost quite a bit of money to have someone come in there and tow out all those vehicles.
Joe, this is Frank, so, uh, we will not assess him the fines, and we're gonna give him time to clean it up, and reasonable amount of time, uh, we'll take it from there if he doesn't clean up.
Yes, that's, um, basically what I told him in a conversation, a phone conversation, that I would, um, I would come to you, explain to you all what he's doing, he's actively working on it, but the minute he stops, that's when the hammer comes down, basically.
That's excellent, very good, Joe.
The same thing with, um, Pleasant Street, uh, 38 and 30 and 40, they have worked hard, the animals have all been moved off the property. They've cleaned up a lot, they just have, and they just have quite a few years of stuff to still continue to go through and get rid of. But it's night and day over there, they've worked hard, uh, I, I've been dealing with Cody Keeler, and, and he is, you know, really advocated for his family, his, his brother and his father, and they, they really worked hard, and I told them that, again, keep working at it, and I will ask the commissions, you know, leeway in as far as the fines go, and, but the minute you stop, again, you know, we gotta get it cleaned up, we wanna close it out, so, um, and, and I, I, I have to admit, they've, they've worked hard over there, they really have.
Very, very good, Joe, this is Frank, uh, very good job, I just have a question about the pet pig. I had a friend, I had a friend 60 years ago who had a pet pig, and it used to stay in the house next to that old wood stove, and it weighed about 300 pounds, and it truly was a pet pig. Now, what's, what's the story with the pet pig?
They got rid of the pigs.
Oh my God, that's, that's a heartbreak for them.
Yeah, the pigs, uh, they moved all the animals to the lot behind them, which is a big, it's an old farm, and it's in Enfield, and it's over five acres. And, you know, they, like I said, they've really, really worked hard. So we'll just keep on them and, and, you know, hope they keep going in the right direction, but they're aware, um, that, you know, that we will be watching them, and I told them that they're very fortunate that they have a, um, a non-professional CEO working with them, but within a month, I'm hoping, we will have a professional in here, and they have about a month to get their stuff cleaned up before somebody that knows all the rules and regulations and, you know, will, uh, really enforce them, so that kinda motivated them a little too.
Good thing, and sometimes people just need a, a hand in the right direction to.
So, um, I, my friend at Harrington Road, um, I went by there actually a few hours, well, about 3 o'clock, 3, I'm, I really haven't been able to see any activity there, most of the vehicles are gone, even the ones that he had in the backyard. The garage doors are shut quite a bit now. I don't see the heavy traffic that was there, he did not respond to the letter that I sent out. So, I'm, I, basically, I'm just waiting until, you know, I can actually verify what, if it's still happening there. But I, I, he's done a very good job of stopping right at the moment.
I drove by, I drove by there last week, I drove by every day over there, I, last week he had some people coming in and out, but he's definitely slowed down a lot from what he was doing before.
My, my observation is the same, I was by there this afternoon and there was nothing there, I thought the houses, you know, there was a few vehicles in the back, but it doesn't look like he's actively, uh.
I had a, oh, I had a conversation with a mutual friend of his that I know, and, um, I, again, I explained to him that, you know, I mean, I'm in this job for maybe another two or three weeks, a month at the most. And when the next person comes in who knows all the ins and outs and the regulations that's done it, you know, so it would, my best advice to him is, if he's in fact fixing vehicles, find a licensed garage, move, get out of there now while the getting is good. So we'll just monitor it, and, you know, we'll, we'll just keep watching it, be what we can do on, basically verify. Quickly, um, 20, 20 North Road, which is the big apartments next to Sophia's, they're progressing quite, quite well, there, it looks like they've got process going down, um, the detention basins, everything looks good. Uh, West River Farms, everything looks good, Craftsman Road, that, I think they're pretty close to asking for their CO if they haven't. All my pits, for the last two weeks, I've had no complaints, everything's been good. Farms Road, that detention basin, we're, we're working on completing that detention basin and closing that project out. I did send some more letters out, um, last meeting to the bridge for 119 Bridge Street, 119 and, and 232, and then 125 and 127 Bridge. I received a phone call on the 23rd from 2527, telling me that they are cleaning up and they are getting rid of vehicles, there'll be more vehicles moved out of there. It does look a little different, it looks like they're doing some stuff, uh, but I, um, I will watch them, and I heard nothing on the other one, so I think, at their next meeting, I'll probably recommend we go next step with the other ones. And I will reach back out to this lady before the next meeting and, and pay her a site, a site visit and walk around and see what they're doing, and if she's working on it, then I'll recommend that, we just monitor her and, you know, give her some time to get it cleaned up. I did get a new one, two actually, new complaints, one, I think I brutally talked to you all about before, was, uh, I've got some rotten grass smell that I really don't think is a zoning issue. Uh, and one neighbor's piling it on the other neighbor's property. And I, I don't know what, I mean, with your recommendation, I guess I can send the neighbor, the other neighbor a letter and ask them not to pile the grass. I don't know what our legal rights are, you know, it's really more of a, I think it's more of a neighbor dispute of anything.
Correction, you said he's piling it on the neighbor's grass land. It's keeping it up.
They're keeping it on their own property. They're just, you know, it's in the back corner. Unfortunately, the way it is, is the, their back corner meets her side. So they're piling it, you know, it looks like years ago they boxed out for a shed and they had nothing to do with the material. So they pushed it back there, made a pile, and it's just compost. And if the wind blows right, it blows back towards this other lady and she smells the dead grass.
Yeah, I mean, under a right to farm, you know, composting could fall underneath that. Uh, you, there may be no recourse at all. Only a thing I can think of is if it's, you know, the 15-foot buffer off the property line, maybe.
Or perhaps it's, it's a health issue. You can look into that. I, I don't know.
Alright, I will do a little more research on that one. The only other thing is I've got another, um, Phelps Road, 118 Phelps Road. Basically, it's an old farm. It's the old wind farm. And there's just a bunch of old abandoned vehicles, bunch of farm, you know, it's, you know, I guess you would call it blight. So I'm going to hit them with the first step of one of our letters that say, please clean it up according to ordinance 8-0. I don't know if I could tell you, but I'm going to hit them with a, um, just a, you know, a, a very nice, the very nice letter that just says, we need you to clean it up because you're in violation of zoning ordinance. 8.01 and 8.03, I believe. And that's it. If you have any questions, I'm trying to move it along for you.
Perfect.
No, thank you very much, Joe. Thank you for.
If you're lucky, this is.
You're doing in a few months more than we had done in years.
Exactly. Good job, Joe. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, under old business, is Terry Han here?
Yes.
Okay, Warehouse Point Planning Study?
Hi, guys. Okay, um, so as you know, it's, uh, ongoing and we're trying to remedy the, and, and sort of, um, coordinate the conversations that we've been having about uses in Warehouse Point with what would ultimately be, um, the, a new zoning regulation, but also the stormwater component of this. Uh, I sent you out new tables from the, the, um, project engineer. Some of these are still unintelligible and I, I don't, I don't think we need to go through those particular numbers at the moment. But I do have three plans and just to sort of let you know where we're at on this. I'm going to just share my screen. Start with this one. Okay, well, just, uh, I'm going to start here. Just for everyone's recollection, uh, what are we talking about for drainage areas? Drainage area one is the, uh, north of Bridge Street. Generally coming to the culvert as it goes from Geisler's underneath to discharge across Bridge Street. Drainage area number two, um, is the, uh, big Y. I got that right this time, right? Yes. Okay, drainage area three, uh, is essentially, um, the south side of Bridge Street. On the east side, uh, the land that, um, uh, was previous, had a previous application on it for, um, the Lowe's application. Uh, and, um, the wetland corridor that comes off of I-91. And then all of this land, all this land drains to a series of swales and streams that ultimately go to the Blue Ditch. Drainage area four is the other side or the west side of that drainage area, which is basically Main Street. School, uh, Holcombe, you know, the, the whole area back here, Scott. Drainage area five is for essentially the, the soccer complex, some additional houses on, uh, Main Street. And they all drain towards Main Street and then into a culvert. And then drainage area six is the backside of the houses on South Water Street and on Main Street and the wastewater treatment plant and, um, Little League fields, just so that we're all talking about the same thing. Get a different map here. Are you seeing two maps at the moment? One behind each other?
Just one.
Okay, alright, then I can, alright, open this up then. Got it. Alright, so, um, what we're looking at is obviously the drainage areas and the, um, zone, the proposed zones don't match. Okay, so for example, our pink zone here, the, the Warehouse Point Bridge Street Mixed Use Zone includes drainage area one, drainage area three, uh, and area land that is not part of it. So, so it, they don't match. So what we're trying to do is, um, it's a little complicated for the engineer running his stormwater calculations because this part of, uh, drainage area one now has, uh, proposed impervious surface that's different from the rest of it. So anyway, they, they're having some difficulties. We're sorting those out, those technical difficulties out. What happens though is, uh, our intent is to balance, uh, the ability to build additional impervious surface to minimize the potential for, um, uh, increased flooding and other stormwater issues associated with the Blue Ditch. So our starting point is the existing conditions, which sets a certain amount of impervious surface. And then we have the current zoning, which was clearly established, um, without consideration for the stormwater issues. Uh, so that you have, for example, um, uh, the, this part of Bridge Street, this, these areas here, the current zoning allows for 65% and 75% impervious coverage without sort of considering what then happens downstream. And there's nothing in the regulations, uh, at the moment that says that you have to do anything to consider that. Uh, so right now, the, the propose, the current zoning establishes, uh, a theoretical maximum. And what we're trying to do is based on the site plans that we have done, um, some of the things that we've talked about, try to, um, marry up an impervious coverage with the proposed zones. So this was our first, um, attempt at it that we had presented in the last couple of meetings, which was just comparing, this map compares the existing impervious coverage and the zone that it's currently, um, in with what we're proposing. So you can sort of see, in, in many cases, for example, along Bridge Street, uh, we are looking at increasing the amount of impervious surface here. But on the back end over here on this property, um, we're, what happens is we're looking to reduce the impervious surface here. Compared to the proposed zoning, uh, the proposed zoning is a theoretical entity that can change at any particular time. So it's not a, it's not a guarantee or a promise to somebody. It's, it's, uh, uh, looking at how we can sort of make sure that this is, this development on this parcel is in fact going to have a significant impact on the Blue Ditch, especially on what we call the, um, Bridge Street Pond, the Spring Street to Holcombe Pond, and then the Main Street Pond in these areas here. Uh, and that is, it's a direct relationship between the impervious surface and what we're talking about. So trying to find this balancing act, um, to enable for, you know, some areas to be developed versus other areas that would not. That was, that's kind of where we're headed at the moment. And, and has been the direction that we've been doing for the last year or so. In this initial one, um, the idea was that we would like, take for example, this section here, the, um, WPMS2, we had an option of 70% impervious and then the potential of increasing the amount of impervious surface if the historic resource was preserved. Based on my last conversations with Ruben, and rightly so, his comment was, no, no, no. We, we want to make, we want to make what we want, the, the, um, approved by right, the site plan approval. And if they want, somebody wants to do something different than that, then they need a special permit approval. So we wanted to set it up so that what it is that you want, um, is, um, uh, the part of the site plan approval by right. So for example, the preserving historic resources is part of what is, um, the, uh, is only requires a site plan approval, does not require a special permit, basically. So some of these, uh, initial conversations have been switched in the next, uh, map. Hang on, I'm going to get you another map. Oh, hold on, nope, not yet, not yet. Um, also in this discussions, uh, had a very nice conversation and I am grateful for, um, uh, Jay Usery, who, and Tim Kuhn, who, um, sat down and talked to me for a little while as they have many clients that are within this zone. One of the conversations that we had was to try and figure out, okay, uh, we have impervious surface. We don't necessarily want to do detention, but the stormwater manual requires that you do, uh, water quality volume. And we know that the only real, um, impact on the stormwater is to sort of offset the impervious surface. So in other words, we were kind of, we're leaning in the direction, and I think this is where we're going to head up. We're pretty close to that recommendation is that in all of these locations, the site plan requirement would need to show for the new impervious surface, not the existing impervious surface, but the new impervious surface, that you need to, uh, treat the water quality volume and infiltrate 10% of the increase of impervious surface. So, uh, I sat down with, uh, Jay and Tim and talked about whether or not that was a reasonable, rational, um, approach based on, you know, their understanding of the area and, um, sort of expectations of some of their clients. And I, I, not to put words in their mouth, but I think it was well received. The only caveat was that to, wanted to make sure that, uh, if there are soils that do have high groundwater table that do not allow for infiltration, that we accommodate that. So in other words, you don't want to set up a regulation that says you got to infiltrate 10% of your impervious surface when you can't infiltrate at all because your groundwater is at 18 inches. Makes sense, right? Um, so what we did was we, um, uh, went through the, um, we added the soil map to our proposed zoning to see if we could find the soils that have groundwater problems. Let's see. And, uh, we were able to identify those soils, um, that have some groundwater, uh, table issues or limit, limitations. So basically, anything where the groundwater table is less than 36 inches from the surface, you wouldn't have enough cover to put, uh, infiltration in, um, unless you did some sort of fill and nobody's going to do that. That's not the intent. So, um, interesting thing is when we started this project, uh, some time ago, the soil maps that we had, for some reason, somebody, somewhere online, the Soil Conservation Service and NRCS has changed some of the numbers and the names of the soils. So we have updated that information. But in general, anything that's a, a single number, those are the wetland soils anyway. So we're, we're taking those out of consideration. Um, the 23s and the 25s, uh, some of the 28s, um, have groundwater issues. The 43 and the 80, the 80s, uh, have potential groundwater issues. 104, 107, and down here at 701. Those are good to know, but the truth of the matter is we don't have that many of those. You can see these areas with the stripe, uh, those are already identified or the, the, the dark blue or the sort of teal color with the stripe, those are already identified as wetland areas anyway. And they match the soil with, um, groundwater, um, issues. Our groundwater issues are, soils are mostly located, you can see the red Xs here, out on Pleasant area here, the 701 on the back end of the school, although that seems unlikely to be a problem, given the development that has occurred there. There's a little bit of 701, um, which is pretty much tied into the stream corridor off these areas here. There's a little bit of 701 associated with the Blue Ditch this way. But, uh, you know, other than that, it looks like the areas, there's a little bit of 701 off the corner here. But they've already, they're working detention and that doesn't seem to be a problem at the moment. But according to these guys, there's supposed to be a wetland, um, right through the middle of the soccer field. So something, something's not, um, matching up properly, which is why you do site-specific wetland delineations when you do a site plan application. So I think that we're feeling pretty confident that the, um, soil types would allow for infiltration. Uh, and what may occur is that, uh, we're, we're probably going to recommend that the, a special permit be granted. If the soil, if after it's been proven that infiltration is not available, then you can go, um, and get a, um, special permit to allow the, for the development to occur, um, without the infiltration. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, actually.
Okay. Alright, so then I have one last, um, map. Hold on. Where's my last map? Missing. Alright, hold on. Sorry. There we go. Okay, so. Screen. I find one, there it is. Okay. So, um, I head forward this to you guys for your packets. Uh, it, at, this is the final delineation of the zones and the recommendations for impervious surface that we are using to finish up the stormwater report. And I think at this point, the stormwater report, um, will show that there's not, um, a significant amount of difference between the, uh, like the special permit use versus the non-special permit use from a stormwater perspective. But that, um, that idea of, uh, the water quality volume and infiltrating the 10% impervious surface is just a good practical application of, for, uh, any development that occurs here. And it's an offset for what will essentially be, uh, with the exception of this property over here and probably this property over here, that there'd be no, no detention is proposed. Because that's just not, um, it's not a good idea to hold the water back. So I think we are very close to narrowing down a final, um, zoning map with the impervious surface so that we'll be ready to, uh, move to the public, um, input phase. That's all I have.
It's enough.
A lot of materials, Frank, a lot of material there to digest, but very well done, Terry. Very well done.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions or thoughts?
It looks like you're getting very close.
Yeah, we are. I, I think the, um, the next thing is going to be a narrative that goes with all of this. That's going to be the script for the, um, public input, uh, so that you'll get a chance to see what, um, you know, sort of, uh, what, what that whole process and the questions that we want to ask the public are. So that's, that will be what I'll, I'll submit for the next meeting.
Sounds good to me.
Of course.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask you, what's it do for me?
Yes. And, and that, you know, that's, that's an interesting question because, um, in some cases, we can, we can tell people that they can add, you know, they can add on to their house. you know, they can add on to their house in a way that they couldn't do it before without a variance. In some cases, we can talk about, you know, the, uh, greater square footage on various different businesses. But in some, a few properties, we are talking about reducing the amount of impervious surface. And those are kind of the development end, but from the side of, for example, the, um, eight houses or so that back onto the Blue Ditch between Bridge Street and, um, Main Street. What they want to know is whether or not they can expect to see more, um, flooding at higher levels or not. What are you doing to make that situation better? And all of our stormwater models are showing that we're not making it better. Or what we're trying to do is make sure that we don't make it worse. And because making it, making it better, there's not a possible solution. Cause even the one that where we ran, um, you know, assuming that we're taking out 20% impervious surface out of the whole watershed, uh, did not significantly change the water levels that run through the Blue Ditch. The one thing that did significantly change parts of that water was, um, the proposed plans that had been done in the past to replace the culverts at, um, Holcomb and Spring, um, and then, uh, sort of clean out and upgrade the, the discharge to the Main Street culvert. But that makes the water run faster to, um, the, um, the wetland behind the wastewater treatment plant. It gets out of there faster, but it is, it's, it stays a little higher, a little longer. Because we've drained the watershed out faster. So that's kind of what happens down there.
Very good, Terry. Very good. Very good.
So if you guys have any other questions, uh, I do, um, want to sit down with, um, Len sometime in the, in the next week or so, just to sort of go through from his perspective, um, before we get ready to, um, make this, you know, ready to go to the public. So that, that's kind of where I'm at the moment. Have any other questions?
I do not.
I do not.
Okay. See you guys at the next meeting.
Hopefully the next meeting won't go on as long.
Okay, sometimes it happens. I mean, you know, I, I, I still recall my, uh, most famous meeting that we were 14th on an agenda and we got on at 1:30 in the morning. So this is, this is still early as far as I'm concerned.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, do we have any other business? To discuss? No correspondence. This is supposed to be our business meeting. And I think we've been given the business. So if no one else has anything, I asked for adjournment, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor? Meeting's adjourned. I hope Joe comes back.
He's been on vacation?
I don't know.
Good job. Good job, Sully. I'll tell you, I admire the position you were in tonight.
Held up well.
I could have done a better job, I guess. That's life.